Good morning and welcome to our commission meeting for January 21st, 2025. I'm going to call our meeting to order. A note for the record that we have a full quorum of commissioners present. Before we get started, you know, silence your cell phone, avoid embarrassment. And if you're going to speak today, make sure that you're signed in at the back of the room. We are required for public record to have your name. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on to our routine business, I'd look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda, which Commissioner Benega is going to recuse himself from action on. Our consent agenda is stuff like bills to be paid, personnel action, routine business for the county, I guess. Anybody from the public like to comment on our consent agenda? Commissioners, anybody want to remove anything from our consent agenda? Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Kiple.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. All the information on our consent agenda is available in the auditor's office if anybody would ever want to see that information, those reports. Moving on now to our regular business. First agenda item is a presentation from the Family Visitation Center. I have Jolene and Carol this morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Jolene Thompson. I'm the director at the Family Visitation Center. I'd like to thank you for allowing us to come and present today. We are, I was thinking last night about what I was going to say today, and I realized that we're in year 25 of Family Visitation Center being in the Sioux Falls community. We started in 2020, and so we got an anniversary to celebrate this year. So would like to thank the commission for your continued support for us and the work that we provide. Family Visitation Center provides safe supervised visits to families who've had some kind of disruption in their lives. And my first encounter with Family Visitation Center was actually as a foster parent back in 2020, when one of the caseworkers of a kiddo that I had was saying, there's this new place in town that will facilitate the visit so they don't have to happen at the department. Would you be willing to drop them off and pick them up so they can see their parents? I'm like, sure, yeah, absolutely. So from the little spot on Western Avenue, which was like one visitation room, I think, to our other location at 14th Street, and now to our new location that we've had for almost five years now, we've grown and we've changed. And the thing that stays the same is the fact that families have disruptions. And those disruptions come from all different avenues and different reasons. And it is so vitally important for children to be able to stay connected with their families safely during those disruptions, and that is what we provide. We get to, well, I get to walk those parents through during an intake of talking to them about, yeah, what brings you here sucks, and we provide a service that really nobody wants to ever use. But the point is, like, we're here, and we're here for you to be able to see your child or children and to do that in a safe manner, and hopefully get you on your way, get you back, go into wherever you need to go, and this is just a stopping point in your life and a box that you can chuck off later saying, I accomplished that. I did what I needed to do to get back on track so I could have a different relationship with my kid. But during that time, staying connected to your children is so important. It's important to the parents, but it's also so vitally important to the children to stay connected to their families. I get to watch children as I go up to pick them up from our front door to take them back to the visitation room, and I get to round the corner and see their faces light up. And they're not lighting up because I'm there. They're lighting up because somebody's there to take them back to see their parent. And they run down the hallway, and they're so excited to see their parent, and they're telling me what they're going to do during their visit, and they're telling me what snack they're going to pick out and what toys they're going to play with because they just want to see their parent. They don't have to worry about court. They don't have to worry about mom and dad not getting along. They don't have to worry about whatever is going on between the adults. They just get to hang out with their mom or their dad for that hour a week and be that person and be that family that they want to be. And so every day, I'm reminded of the importance of who we are and what we do, whether people are happy to have to use us or not. When Carol and I were talking about just different encounters that we've had, we have a parent that utilized us multiple years ago that has become a consistent and faithful donor to us. He has given close to, I'll have to, Carol?
He gives about $10,000 a year.
A year. And randomly, we'll just see something come through, and I'll see it, and I'm like, oh, there it is. And in a conversation with him, he said, I didn't use you guys for very long, but it was a really dark time in my life. And he said, if I didn't have that hour a week to look forward to, to see my kids, I really don't know where I would be right now. But I knew that every week, I could see my kids for an hour. And that got me through that, for him, a pretty short period of time in his life, and he has not forgotten that, and he continues to support us. Two weeks ago, I came around the corners, and one of my staff had let somebody in, and I looked up, and here was another parent that used to utilize our services and who now runs their own nonprofit, and they dropped off toys and said, we had a surplus of toys over Christmas, and I thought of you guys because you guys were so crucial in me being able to see my kids. And so I wanted to bring these toys to you. And so the support that we get from the community is phenomenal, whether it's elementary school kiddos doing juice box drives for us, or just parents dropping off their stuffed animals that their kids don't play with anymore, those kinds of things. The support that we get is amazing. The support that we get from families that used to utilize us is probably the thing that touches me the most. The thing that I'm like, this is why we do what we do. This is why we're in this community, is to make sure that those commitments with their children and those relationships with their children stay true and stay real for them and that they can move on and do things outside of Family Visitation Center. We have not raised our rates since 2019. We have kept it steady. It continues to be a challenge. Thankfully, we have a very supportive community, but the challenges continue to be there. I don't want to have to raise rates, like, things are expensive. Like, it hurts when we all go to the grocery store, and it hurts when we pay the electric bill. And so we don't want to have to raise rates, and that's why your continued support of us is so crucial and so important because it does offset that gap of what it costs us to provide that service, which is right around $100 an hour. And it allows us to offset that gap with the parents not having to pay more, for me not having to raise rates and say, well, yeah, I get it. I get that you coming up with 25 or 50 bucks a week is a lot of money, which it is, but I have to pay staff, and I have to pay my electric bill, and we have to do all of these things and keep our building running and those kinds of things. And so your support of us is just vital, and we're so appreciative of it, and it does not go unnoticed. So, thank you. Does anybody have questions?
All right. Before we go to questions from the commission, anybody from the public like to make any comments on this presentation? All right. Commission, any questions? Commissioner Blainberg.
Thanks for being here and for the work that you guys do.
Thank you.
I was just curious, what hours do you provide services, and when are the busy hours, and how do you handle staffing challenges?
We are open Monday through Friday from 9:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night for visits, and then on Saturdays, we're open from, right now, we're open from 8:00 until 1:00 on Saturdays for visits. Our busiest times are afternoons and evenings. We have a contract with the state for child protection cases as well. Our busiest time for our private pay clients would be evenings, typically 5:00 to 8:00 in the evenings, and then Saturdays are our busiest times. Staffing, most of my full-time staff work during the day, and then we have, we're very, I'm very blessed with part-time staff that come in for that 5:00 to 8:15, 5:00 to 8:00 shift and watch visits. We have several, several of my full-time staff work full-time, or several of my part-time staff work full-time in other helping agencies within the community. So they're familiar with de-escalation techniques. They're familiar with the clientele that we sometimes get. They're familiar with the struggles that parents are having and families are having. They're familiar with mental health issues that we see, you know, increasing every year. The mental health issues, when I first started, it was mostly alcohol, drug-related kinds of things, and now mental health has just totally skewed that and the mental health issues that we're dealing with. And so the part-time staff are so crucial to us because they allow us to stay open during those evening times when it's most busy for our, what we consider our private pay clients.
Pass on my appreciation to your staff. I know they do an amazing job of
Thank you, I will.
Providing a safe environment and also, you know, screening parents when they come in and observing, and the level of skills that they have is just impressive to be able to provide that service.
Yes, they are. I'm very blessed to have them.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you for all you do in the community. Could you paint a broader picture of the financial outlook in the sense of, I hope we can continue our level of funding for you at the county level, but you said you also have a state contract, and do you have any, like, United Way or other funding sources that keep you going?
We are not a United Way agency. We used to be. Several years ago, we were a United Way agency. We are no longer a United Way agency. We do have the contract with the state that helps to cover the costs of the children that are in the foster care system. We have a grant that we get, a federal grant that we get through, that helps offset the cost for our private pay. That is, it's a $100,000 grant that is divisible between all of the visitation centers in the state, and that's decided at the level at peer. So we never know what we're going to get every year. This year, we got $36,000 from that, from that grant, but it's different every year. Whatever, you know, what we get every year is just different, so we're never really sure what we're going to need to get. And those are our two biggest ongoing funding sources. The rest is our Director of Development, Carol Walter, who does a fabulous job of getting our word out there and preaching our mission and all of those kinds of things. It is her working tirelessly to help get the word out there.
Perfect. Thank you.
And then in, sorry, in 20, in 2020, we did come back under the Avera umbrella fully. We were, we had a partnership with them, and then in 2020, we came back under the Avera umbrella fully. That allowed us to move into an Avera building offset, so we didn't have to pay rent anymore, which was a big savings for us as well.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for what you do. I'm going to ask, this is more of a staff questions, and Tom said I could put them on the spot anytime I want, but we have somewhat of an obligated funding source that we use where these money that we help you with your projects comes from, you know, kind of, for the, for the public, yeah, just so they know where the money that we use to help fund this project
From the Domestic Abuse Fund.
And that money comes through the, is it marriage?
Typically, registered deeds, divorce fees, et cetera.
So fees that come through the registered deeds for marriage and divorce decrees and that type of thing.
Yes.
So that's how we fund the money that goes to help with this organization. So it's kind of a interesting circle on how that all plays out. So, yeah. So, Jolene, thank you, and Carol, thank you. It's a great service to our community, and it doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Moving on. I look for a motion to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between the Minnehaw County and IMEG Corp. for construction administration of project MC 2306, Structure 518134, bridge replacement. Good morning, Jacob.
Morning, Commissioners. Jacob Mars, Minnehaw County Highway Department. This project has been in front of you several times. The design is done. The construction has been awarded to BX Civil. Construction is planned to start sometime around the beginning of March this year, all depending on what the weather outlook is for the next month or so. And in this agreement with IMEG Corp., would provide construction administration, which includes inspection, surveying, and then testing services for the oversight of the project during construction. This is part of a South Dakota Big Grant, so the DOT does contribute 80% to the cost.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, questions, action?
I would make a motion to support and approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Benega.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, look for a motion to declare Highway Department scrap by Internet surplus and authorize disposal by recycling. Here's again, Jacob.
Thank you. We have a scrap bin at the Highway Department that fills up occasionally. It's currently full, and we would, we would like to empty it.
Public comment on this agenda item. Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Yeah, we'll call vote.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Recognize, recognition of the appointment of a second Veterans Service Officer. Good morning, Lori and company.
Good morning. Good morning, Commission. Lori Montes, Human Services Assistant Director, here this morning to introduce a couple of staff, one new, one not so new, from Human Services. And so I'm going to start by introducing Crystal Widdifield, who is our Emergency Relief and Veteran Service Office Manager.
Hello. Good morning. Just wanted to say good morning. So you had a face of who I am, and then also introduce our second VSO, who's been appointed through the state. He started in November, Doug Roderick.
Good morning, everyone. Doug Roderick, just started here in November with VSO, Veteran Service Officer here in Minnehaw County. In November, as I said, I was in the Marines from 2006 to 2010 is when I got out, and shortly after that, I was with the Highway Patrol here in South Dakota for several years as well before this position. So just wanted to say hi, give you a little bit of background on me, and there we go.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Public comment on our new appointments. Commission.
Mr. Chair, I'll just ask a question. First off, on behalf of Commissioner Karski, well, thank you for your service, but it wasn't in the Air Force, so Commissioner Karski might give you a hard time. So, but we respect our Marine Corps as well. Can you describe for us just a little bit on how, maybe you didn't know any different because you came in as the second officer, but maybe one of your colleagues can speak to how having two of the VSOs helps out in your day-to-day workflow and how you share the workload? Because for the longest time in Minnehaw County, we just had one, and you had to be in multiple places at a time. So just describe how you're working together as a team.
I'm sure. Yeah, this is my first week fully here. I've been training, I've been training with the state for about a month now, so I don't have a lot of experience here in Minnehaw County, working with vets yet, but from my understanding here, is about 16,000 or more veterans here in Sioux Falls, in Minnehaw County, to be exact. And we only have one VSO, and it sounds like there should be more than one, so I'm glad, I'm sure they're happy to have two to kind of spread the workload. It also sounds like we're supposed to be doing more community engagement, which we haven't been doing because there's only one to take in all the walk-ins and appointments that come for veterans that maybe just getting out or have been out for 50 years, didn't know they had benefits that they had access to, and now they do, thanks to maybe some, maybe to Tyler and hopefully myself here soon. So hopefully, we can get out to the community more, do more community outreach, and visit all the nursing homes here in Minnehaw County, which if you didn't know, there were 28 nursing homes here in Minnehaw County, and I'm not sure that Tyler's had the time to visit even one or two yet. So hopefully, we can get on that and get on track for that option here.
All right. Thank you.
I have great respect for the Marine Corps, Commissioner Kiple, and
As you should.
And I know your wife's a ROTC grad from Notre Dame. My constellations on the game last night. Anybody else have comments? All right. So look for a motion to approve these appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Yep, you too.
We are approved. Moving on, consider a motion to authorize the IT Department to purchase computers for 2025 off a quote from the Dell Technologies. Good morning, Monty.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Monty Wadambach with Minnehaw County IT. This morning, I just have, really just a routine purchase of our yearly computers that we replace throughout the county. We replace approximately one-fifth of our computers every year, just so it's kind of a, an even workload for, for my staff to get around to replacing them. So this quote represents about 61 desktop PCs, 16 laptops, 30 tablets throughout various departments here at the county. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item. Commissioners, questions or action?
Commissioner Karski, just a quick question. Monty, what's delivery like? Because everybody's talking about changes in tariffs and all that kind of stuff, and where the manufacturers are and all that.
Good question. So our quote goes to the end of the month here, so we should be locked in on these prices, fortunately. As far as delivery, I don't think we've had any problems with delivery dates. So I don't think we'll have any problems with that. And once we get these in, it takes my staff usually probably a couple, couple months or so to get them all deployed. It's, you know, kind of a onesie-twosie process of working with those end-users to find a time that works for them to get it, get their computer replaced, and so anyways, it'll take a few months, but shouldn't take too long to get the equipment in.
Thank you.
Looking for some action.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Monty.
Thank you.
Authorize the chair to sign an amendment to the MOU between Minnehaw County and the South Dakota State University for 4H programming. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. So this is an amendment to our existing memorandum of understanding between the county and SDSU, their extension program. For those of you who've seen this before, we do, we've had this existing agreement whereby SDSU Extension funds one of the two 4H educators. However, a couple of years ago, we did amend or revise the agreement to provide for a second educator, and that second educator is included here. There's a cost share between us and SDSU. So what this memorandum of understanding does is effectively extends the memorandum of understanding that we've had in the past, which provides for our relationship with the 4H program, but also allocates $27,270 as our portion of the 50/50 cost share for the second 4H educator. And just one of the other changes to the memorandum of understanding is the change in terminology from, in the past, they were referred to as 4H Youth Program Advisors and now are referred to as 4H Educators. Nathan and Aubrey are here if you have any questions about the 4H program in general, but they will be back within the next couple of months to provide their annual update to you. Subject to your question, that's all I have. I do recommend approval.
Thank you, Tom. Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, questions, action?
Mr. Chair, I would just say thank you to 4H for being here and for the work that goes in, and Tom, I know it's a complicated process sometimes to get these things taken care of, and I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Establish appointment to the Minnehaw, Minnehaw-Lincoln County Board of Mental Illness and the Minnehaw County Review Board for Developmental Disabilities. Morning, Tom.
Good morning, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer again. So this is a, essentially a follow-up to a presentation I gave at the last meeting on January 7th. At that meeting, you had adopted a resolution providing for several members to the two boards noted by Commission Chair Karski. At the time, I indicated that there was still one outstanding appointment. What this resolution before you today does is appoints an individual to that last remaining vacancy, and she's seen at Dover. She is a Minnehaw County resident and would serve as a regular, regular layboard member to each of those boards. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, questions, action?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Kiple.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a resolution appointing Commissioners to the Museum Board and Accessible Housing Advisory Board. Keep going.
No, keeping on going. So Tom Greco again, Commission Administrative Officer. So it'd be for you as a resolution to appoint Commissioner Blainberg as the Commission Representative to the Accessible Housing Advisory Board and Commissioner Heisey as the Commissioner on the Sioux Land Heritage Museum Board. As you know, you've gone through the process of assigning liaison, providing for liaison assignments over the past several weeks. Among those are included the Museum Board and Ahab for short. Both of those do require Commission approval for those individuals to sit on those boards, so this is a measure to do that. So I would encourage your approval, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Public comment. Commission, questions? Action?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Kiple.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. We have a briefing memo on the 2045 envisioned comprehensive plan and request to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice for the adoption of the 2045 envisioned comprehensive plan, so it's a briefing and a request.
Yeah, a two for today. Thank you. Scott Anderson, your planning director, and primarily, I'm going to be seeking your, your authorization to have the auditor publish a hearing notice, but at the same time, I thought I would just give you a quick briefing update on where we've come with the planet, with the comprehensive plan. So our previous plan was adopted about 10 years ago in June of 2015, and, you know, every so often, every eight to 10 years, you look at these things and decide that you probably need to update your comprehensive plan. So we set on that path about a year and a half ago to start updating it, and we've spent a solid year working on updating the plan. So as part of that process of updating the plan, each chapter was reviewed and written by staff and then presented to the Planning Commission, and they spent about eight months, eight to 10 months reviewing, making comments and suggestions on how we wanted those, each chapter of our comprehensive plan to look. And then, once it was completed, we held three meetings, three public envisioning meetings in Hartford and Brandon and Dell Rapids. So, once those meetings were done, then we had a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission in November, at the end of November, at our Planning Commission meeting, and they recommended approval of that comprehensive plan. So as part of the plan, and I think I have a little PowerPoint presentation, if Trish could pull that up for me, we had a porthole, a portal that was open for the public, and we had opportunities for them to make comments. So as part of that, we were able to have about 60 visits to that site and we had some responses. And some of those responses, we put into like a word issue or a word puzzle, not puzzle, but a diagram. So if you could pull those up, we asked specific questions. For example, how do you feel about allowing more residential development? And you can see the number of responses we got and some of the words that, some of the phrases that came up over and over again, land, new, ag. What was very interesting was the next, a couple of the next ones, for example, how do you feel about accessory dwelling units and ADU? We spent a lot of time discussing that as one of the, maybe of the new options of our comprehensive plan. And you can see, it was well received by the, by the number of people that responded. Talked about parents and building and close and home and housing. So that was one of the items that our Density Task Force reviewed and our building eligibility is, I think, is, I think that might be the last one.
So Scott, if I could just interrupt you, that, going back to that last slide if I could. So just from my interpretation of the slide, a five is they really didn't have one strong feeling one way or the other, is how that is referring to?
So basically a zero is they were opposed to it or felt strongly one way. And 10 would be they felt strongly in favor of it. So you can see that it balanced on the neutral to the positive side.
Okay. Thank you.
So with that in mind, I think that the next step is that we have a public hearing in front of the County Commission. And I'm requesting that we set that hearing date for February 18th. That will allow us time to publish the hearing notices. We are required by state law to publish hearing notices of the adoption of the comprehensive plan. So I've provided Kim with the hearing notice, I mean, the Auditor's Office, and I would ask that you authorize the auditor to publish the hearing notice for February 18th. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, questions, action?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Additional comments? I guess the only thing in my mind looking at this, it's a dismal, low number of responses in my mind. I'm glad we got some, but it's just, my interpretation just means it's not important until it is. I mean.
That, I guess, so I will just comment and counterbalance that a little bit, that I felt we had very, very good turnout at our public hearings. So I think that you have to take those both hand in hand. I mean, we got public comments on our website, but we also had well over 100 people show up to participate in our open houses. And if you are familiar with some of these, like, I'll just use, for example, maybe like Transportation, like CCOG holds open houses for different transportation plans. Sometimes they're lucky to get five or six or 10 people there. And we had well over 100. And I know that many of the, of the County Commission attended those meetings. We had lively discussion. I think we had very good participation by the public. We had open dialogue and communication on what we were doing and what the importance of a comprehensive plan and then what our next steps were. And I think overall, it was well received and it was a, I felt, first of all, it was the appropriate steps to take to get that information out to the public in the evenings when people could attend and, and really have a good discussion about it. So I think that it goes hand in hand. We had this portal open for people that maybe couldn't attend the meeting. They were, that portal information was on all the flyers that we sent out and that we published. So it, I think it's hand in hand.
I appreciate that and I, you know, that's a great way to address my question or my concern. Will the portal stay open or?
It is still open.
It is. Okay, so.
We plan on keeping it open through the hearing notice, or the hearing on February 18th. And yeah, it's still out there and that, certainly those flyers that we, that I put out back in October are still floating around in the county. So that QR code thing is still there that people can take the survey.
Okay. Well, I hope people become, talking to our media, you know, that this information is there because the more feedback we get, the better, obviously. So. And we have a motion and a second. Further comments?
Just a comment to say thank you to Scott and your staff. I would agree with what you said. I think it was a very well-done process and lots of opportunity for public comment. And so I'm very excited about moving forward with it. Thank you.
Yeah. So I just want to also, I should clarify that, so the plan is adopted. And then the next steps is we start looking at the zoning ordinance and making some amendments based on, on how the plan was adopted. So I want to make sure the public understands that, that we're talking about accessory dwelling units and maybe changing how we deal with building, transfer of building eligibility. Then, once the plan is adopted, then we start working on that.
Perfect. All right. So we have a motion and a second to set the date of hearing for the second reading for February 18th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Motion to authorize COSAP inter-fund transfer. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. You may recall, we had a federal grant that was awarded in 2021 for the Comprehensive Opioids Stimulant and Substance Abuse Program, also referred to as COSAP. That recently ended at the end of last year, at the end of third quarter of last year. As part of that grant, just because of how the reimbursement from the feds came to us, we transferred some money from the General Fund to help put some dollars into that COSAP fund from a cash perspective. It was a signed money from the General Fund. Now that we've received all of our reimbursements back from the federal government and the COSAP grant is completed, we would like to move that $110,000 back to the General Fund. We had moved General Fund over and now we're moving it back to the General Fund. It was a signed money.
One pocket to the other.
And then this will completely close out our COSAP fund since that grant is done.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item. All right. Commission, questions, actions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Susan. Rules of Procedure, Annual Review. We kind of did this back in July, but we moved our annual review date to January to coincide with, well, go ahead, Meredith.
Good morning Commissioners. Meredith Jarco, Commission Office. So I'm before you today with the annual review of the rules of procedure. Section 7.1 of the rules of procedure states that the County Commissioners shall review the rules in January of each year at a regularly scheduled Commission meeting. As mentioned, we most recently adopted some changes in August. That was because the former date in section 7.1 used to be July. We moved that to January just to align with welcoming a new board each year. The rules of procedure are intended to provide general guidance in conducting the meetings of the Minnehaha County Commission. It outlines board organization, rules of general conduct, officers and staff, meeting types, meeting procedures, committees, and the process for reviewing and amending the rules of procedure. Just as a refresher, in August, a lot of the changes we made were just to kind of clarify some things. There was some language in the rules of procedure that didn't align with how, or didn't properly reflect how our agenda is laid out in the order of meetings. So that was many of the edits that happened this past summer, as well as moving the review to January. At this time, the Commission Office has, the Commission Office staff have no recommended changes, changes to the rules of procedure. However, I will note that Commissioner Heisey has expressed interest in updating Section 5.6, Citizen Participation, Item 4, which is placing an item on the agenda to allow for one Commissioner to place an item on the agenda. Currently, it requires two Commissioners. So that is in the, rules of procedure was attached to the agenda packet just for your review. But that is what I have for you today at this time.
Thank you, Meredith. Are changes, do they require the Commission a vote to the rules of procedure if we do make changes?
Yes, yep.
Okay. So this is a review. If we were to make changes, would we bring that back at a different meeting?
Correct, yep.
Thank you. All right. Public comment on this agenda item. All right. Commission, turn to you for questions, comments, discussion. Commissioner Heisey?
Mr. Chair, it follows that I would comment next. I do have one quick question, Meredith, if I could. The Commission is capable of changing these rules of procedure throughout any time of the year, correct?
Correct, yep.
It's just that they'll be reviewed on an annual basis, moved from, I believe it was July to January.
Yep, so we review it in January, but we can change it at any point, especially if, originally, we had the date in July, because when these rules of procedure were adopted in 2022, the idea was if the legislature passed anything. So if the legislature does pass anything this session, we could just quick make that amendment to the rules in July. But we just make sure that we review it every January.
Yeah, I think the document as a whole is in very good order and the edits that were made in the past were very appropriate. And I think the document's in a fairly good place as it is. However, in respect of those rules of procedure, I would like to propose to my colleagues an update to the Section 5.6, Citizen Participation, Item 4, to allow for one Commissioner to place an item on the agenda. Currently, it requires two Commissioners. As I was sorting through this and thinking about it, as an elected official on principle, I came to the conclusion that the office itself should entitle one to the right to add an item to the agenda independently. I was a bit shocked and had to conceal it when I learned that it requires two Commissioners to add an item. Intuitively, one would assume that a Commissioner could add an item to the agenda at any time for any reason, given the nature of the office. Many other Commissions concur, including Lincoln County, and do not have such a restrictive rule. As the rule currently stands, important items that warrant public attention and a vote may never come to light. One example may come up later in the meeting, for a host of reasons, some more benign than others. As I would have it, if the Commissioner deems an item worthy of the Commission's and the public's attention, they should have the ability to add it to the agenda and to present their case. If perhaps the other Commissioners are unpersuaded, then by all means, the motion or item can die for a lack of second or be moved on from after the discussion takes place. And to elaborate briefly, but not to belabor the point, under our current rules of procedure, it is easier for an elected staff member to add an item to the agenda and have it voted on publicly than it is for a duly-elected Commissioner, in my opinion. Additionally, other elected officials, such as the Register of Deeds or Sheriff, can independently add agenda items related to their office with fewer barriers. Some of you may be concerned that a rule change like this could potentially be misused or abused by an overzealous Commissioner, either now or in the future. However, I would point out that innumerable counties operate effectively under the rule requiring only one Commissioner to add an agenda item. Furthermore, if such a rule were ever misused, it could easily be reversed by a majority of the vote, as we learned any time throughout the year. Our time is valuable and the office we serve is even more so. If the rule were ever misused, I would be the first to advocate for its revision. For all these reasons, I believe it is appropriate to update Section 5.6, Item 4, and I encourage my colleagues to give it due consideration. Thank you.
All right. Discussion on the proposed rule change or change. Commissioner Blyenberg.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to comment and say that I really appreciate the rules of procedure being in place. It's very helpful for newer Commissioners. And I'm sure other people have opinions on your proposal, Commissioner Heisey. I would just like to say that I have been very impressed in my two years now here with the way the Commission works together. And I see it as a big benefit to be able to get a lot done. And so I find the opinion interesting and would, wouldn't disqualify it on its merits. But I would also say I think that it's helpful to be able to have some consensus and to be able to work together as a board. And I don't know if this is an accurate assessment, but maybe somebody who has more experience with the legislature can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think of it somewhat like with the legislature, that a bill has to get out of a committee before it makes it to the floor. So to have one Commissioner working with other Commissioners, to have consensus, I think, builds that cohesiveness that allows us to be effective. And I think we have done a very good job of getting a lot done with a variety of opinions. So I really appreciate that about, about the leadership and the Commission that we get to serve with.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benega?
I guess I've been around for a long time and I don't ever remember that we've had a problem getting something on an agenda because of the fact somebody would not second it before we got to that process. So I think if there's a, if there was a significant concern or a problem that we haven't addressed, I'm not aware of it. So I would be in favor of keeping the process the same.
Mr. Chair, I would tend to agree with my colleague, Commissioner Benega. I think we have a good process in place and I think structurally, what this does is essentially calls out that if a single member brings it up, it essentially inherently fails for lack of a second. So when we approve our agenda each day, in theory, we could amend that and add something to the agenda. We'd have notice problems at that point. But the concept holds that you need a couple of members. I think that brings the collegiality to the body. It's just kind of the inherent parts of the institution that I'd prefer to conserve at this point. And I would just note that we have opportunity for public comment on any topic and we have opportunity in non-action Commission discussion for any topic. So really, at any given agenda, we can talk about anything. It just, to be able to notice it on the agenda formally and to take action, you need two people. So I have not seen a problem with that process to this point and I would be in favor of keeping that.
Thank you, Commissioners. I guess personally, you know, time on the City Council, et cetera, that always took two counselors to put something on the City Council agenda. You know, the elected officials, Auditor, Register of Deeds, Treasurer, Sheriff, I mean, they have specific business that they need to bring before the Commission, so they fully have the ability to put something on the agenda. Does the Chair have the ability to approve or deny something going on the agenda?
Yes, it is identified in the rules of procedure under basically how the agenda is put together. So the Chair does have that authority beforehand.
Seems like maybe too much authority in my mind, but if I wanted to, if I had another Commissioner wanting, and I wanting to put something on the agenda and the Chair not allowing it, that's, I'd probably be more in favor of amending our rules and procedure that way than just having one Commissioner to be able to put something on. Having been doing this for a while, I also don't see the need for a change. Building consensus and getting at least one other person to support your idea or what you want to bring at least gives you a chance when you bring it to the Commission of having support. Interesting. I'm also not in favor of changing that portion of our policies and procedures manual. All right. Other discussion?
I just wanted to say, you know, I thank all my colleagues for their opinions. I was a little bit surprised when this came across my desk to be reviewed this, this month. And I thought it was a worthwhile conversation to have and perhaps it's one could be had down the road. But I respect that it's, you know, the opinions that have been said here today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cole. All right. Yeah, as has been indicated, our rules and procedures may need to be changed because of legislative action to be updated, just because we found out that the way they are probably don't comply with conducting business properly. So at this point, we've reviewed them unless we have a motion and a second to make any changes. I think we can call our, I don't know if we have to vote on it at a future meeting if we're not making any changes. Okay, thank you. All right, so that was an annual review, no commission action.
Correct.
Thank you. All right. Briefing on proposed changes to the Power Outage Response Protocol. We had one of them in my neighborhood last night. It was cold. Yeah.
Commissioners, Meredith Jarco with the Commission Office. So towards the end of the year, we reviewed the Power Outage Response Protocol. This was originally introduced as a policy in January of 2012, and it requires a review by the commission no later than February 1 of each year. This is for any type of power outage, whether it's internal, you know, just one building campus-wide. Because of the different locations that we have, as you know, this summer, we had an outage that didn't affect all of the county buildings. And it goes through the different procedures of who should be contacted, how to handle it, what to do about staff. A lot of our staff functions rely on being able to use our computers, things like that. So we reviewed this policy with the Sheriff's Office, Facilities, IT, and Human Resources. And normally, when we would have changes to a policy, we would provide a redline version. However, this policy was practically rewritten because there was some outdated language. We wanted to prioritize certain language and move it up to the top of the policy so that when you are going through a power outage and you're trying to find someone's phone number or things like that, that you have that information readily available. So included in the packet, the first item is the, is the updated protocol, and then the second one is what the current one is. As you'll see, we did cut down the policy, I think, by an entire page just because there was outdated language and repetitive language. So there's no action requested from the commission today. Because this is a policy that affects personnel, it will be brought to the next commission meeting to formally be voted on. So it's before you today, just as the first briefing, and for any questions or discussion you may have on the, on the policy.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item. All right. This is a briefing and no changes, correct? I mean, well, we're losing a page, but it's a briefing and we're updating it, but it doesn't take any commission action.
Not for today. It's just the first briefing, just if there were any questions on the changes that were made. Because it is a little bit of a, we reformatted it, so it does look different, but.
Will it come back?
Yes, at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Meredith. And our last agenda item, a legislative update.
All right. Me again, Meredith Jarco, County Commission Office. So the legislative, the 100th legislative session began on Tuesday, January 14. Included in this packet is a list of some of the top bills that we are monitoring. It is current as of noon on Friday, January 17. Kind of different in this situation than other meetings moving forward. There was the federal holiday on Monday, so there haven't been a lot of updates. There have been additional five bills introduced since I included this report. So there have been 170 pieces of legislation that have been introduced. Only about a dozen or so have had hearings, and there are a lot of hearings scheduled for today following the federal holiday. So it will be a little bit of a slower start, but we do anticipate that the pace will pick up this week with more hearings happening and more bills being introduced. A couple of the ones I just wanted to highlight today. Senate Bill 5 would permit the sheriff to charge a fee for satisfied or unsatisfied service of process. It has passed amended out of the Senate Judiciary, and if this bill were to pass, we could see approximately up to an additional 150,000 in revenue each year for the sheriff. So we, the Sheriff's Department is supportive of this bill, and we will be tracking that as well. In terms of revenue, there has also been two bills introduced to repeal the 911 surcharge expiration date. As we've mentioned in other meetings before, that would help, the 911 surcharge helps alleviate property taxes. So we are tracking those two bills. One is just to repeal the expiration date. The other one is to repeal the expiration date and change some of the reporting windows. There has been two bills on open meetings, which would concern us. House Bill 1059 would allow for members to communicate via teleconference or other electronic means for the sole purpose of scheduling or confirming availability to attend a future meeting. So that just kind of clarifies that, that that would not be considered an open meeting and have to be noticed just by responding to a calendar invite or things like that. As well as Senate Bill 74 would require the Attorney General to post an explanation of the open meeting rules of the state before January 1 each year. And then we would have to, it requires political subdivisions to review those explanations at our first meeting of the year. So that would be a scenario in which we would amend our rules of procedure just to say, this is the state law, and we will review this at the first meeting. There have been quite a few election bills that have been introduced. There have been some that are in support of allowing citizens to vote and use either a homeless shelter, the county courthouse, a postal mailbox, or a residence in which they may not own or have a lease, but they frequent as their residents. There, so there's some legislation that's in support of allowing those citizens to register, and there's some legislation that is not in favor of that and would, in the bills, not allow for that. There also have been many election bills that are just kind of, I would say, cleaning up some of the existing statute, for example, not allowing citizens to use a pencil while voting, just eliminating that from the statute, so it's a pen. Preventing a governing body from assisting in the canvas of votes for an office if that member is a candidate. That is something that we, for the last few elections, have already practiced on the commission. So we are keeping an eye on all of the elections, bills, and there, again, in the attached packet here, there are a lot of bills that we are tracking. Some of them will affect the county directly in different departments. Some of them will indirectly affect the county. For example, we are tracking House Bill 1019. That is the property tax bill that would eliminate the education levies on owner-occupied, owner-occupied properties and instead increase the sales tax from 4.2 to 5%. That doesn't directly affect the county's property tax levy, but we are keeping an eye on it as I'm sure there will be other property tax bills introduced. So that is my just kind of broad overview of the legislative update. I'm sure at our next meeting, I will have some more updates as more hearings and things happen, but I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Great update, Meredith. Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
There's quite a number of interesting bills on here, and I'll certainly be doing my due diligence and keeping abreast of how these move through the legislature and peer. You know, thank you so much for organizing this for us. And one of the bills, Senate Bill 50, stood out to me. Prohibit the use of drones for purposes of assessing real property for taxation and to provide a penalty therefore. Just curious, Meredith, have you spoken to Chris Lilla about this, the Director of Equalization? Is that something that the county is currently doing, or is it happening in other parts of the state, or is it more of a preemptive measure?
Yeah, I have talked with Chris Lilla, the Director of Equalization. So at this time, Minnehaha County does not use drones to assess property. However, that is something that is, you know, this law would take away the opportunity to even look into. But one of Chris's main concerns was the fact that there, we do conduct flyovers for property assessments. So even though the law specifically states drones, legally, that could, you know, would that then extend to other aerial devices to fly over? So that is something we're keeping an eye on. SDACC is working with the Assessors Association and just kind of staying connected with them to see how that bill turns out and what we can do to make sure that we don't lose any of our current capabilities for assessing property. So we are keeping an eye on that one.
Mr. Chair, I'm curious, Meredith, as to SB 72, if we've had any conversations with our coroner on quantifying how many autopsies we do each year that are of non-Minnehaha County?
Yeah, that one was introduced, I believe, kind of later in the week last week. So that's on my list to touch base with him. Just as a quick overview, Senate Bill 72. That would take certain situations where if our coroner had to do an autopsy for someone who passed in Minnehaha County, but they are a resident in, say, Pennington, who's responsible for that cost. So it has some, it would require that county to cover that cost. So thank you, Commissioner Kipley. That is on my list, and I will follow up with coroners now.
Thank you.
Chris Lilla just tried to call me. Must be watching. Anyway, you know, going back to Senate Bill 50, you know, we talk a lot about using technology and trying to, you know, keep our costs in the county downs because obviously all those expenses are paid by the taxpayers. The insurance world that I belong to, the use of drones is getting, you know, not having to have people go in places that might not be safe because damages or just, whatever the circumstances may be. I mean, the use of drones just seems like it would save taxpayers money. I mean, I can understand the privacy issue, and it probably would require some sort of, you know, allowance by the property owner to say, yeah, you can assess my property using a drone. But yeah, I just see where, you know, using technology and whatever's the latest and greatest to save both personnel costs and safety issues that, you know, sending somebody out to an ag property that has numerous bowls or whatever and getting chased across a field versus having a drone, being able to not, or to be less disruptive. So I'm going to, it's be interesting to follow Senate Bill 50 to see how maybe it's amended or what eventually comes about of it. So, yeah. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, one more bill that caught my attention, namely HB 1043. Require counties and municipalities to provide emergency medical services within their jurisdictions, increase liquidated court costs, and create the Emergency Medical Services Fund and make an appropriation therefore. It does note that the aid is geared toward smaller counties and municipalities. Do you think that's going to affect Minnehaha County in any way or any of the smaller municipalities within the county?
So in the bill, it does have language that if this, if, well, to start, if this were to pass, it would require counties and municipalities to provide emergency medical services. And I know that there, there have been conversations with some of the other smaller counties that that would just be a financial burden for them to provide, and it may be difficult. So I know that some of the smaller counties are worried about the requirements that would be around that. But then those grants that are mentioned, there is language in the bill that it would focus on, I believe it's municipalities under 1,000 in population and maybe counties under a certain amount in population. So we wouldn't, by the parameters laid out in the bill, we would not be eligible for any of that help. And that fund, the grant would come from a fund from the increased liquidated court costs. I believe there's an extra $5 added into the court costs that would then fund that emergency medical services pool to give out grants. So again, it doesn't necessarily directly impact Minnehaha County, but because we have really good relationship with the other counties and with the association of counties, we're just kind of keeping an eye on that.
Yeah. Emergency medical services in the rural areas, AKA the sticks. I know of one county commissioner that got gored by one of his bowls, you know, talk about the bowl and, you know, ambulance wasn't available to get to him. I mean, he had to drive himself to the hospital over an hour away. You know, if you're, we have people from Minnehaha County that go to visit family and friends, or they're out in the rural areas, and I mean, it could be an issue for taxpayers and Minnehaha County citizens of Minnehaha County because they, there is a true crisis situation in the very rural areas when it comes to EMTs and emergency medical services. So we do need to be supportive of, you know, what this bill may be looking at. My two cents worth. All right.
I'll get one more comment, Mr. Chair. The subject of election integrity, it's been, you know, no shortage of contention at some of these commission meetings. I have to wonder, given the passage of a number of these bills that would, you know, change the meaning of residency and so on, is that going to affect our role or our jurisdiction or power on the commission? Or is that something that's more reserved for the auditor's office? Is that going to, essentially in short, going to affect the commission board with the passage of any of those election integrity bills?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if it would, if I would necessarily say it would affect the commission's power. We are tracking it because right now it, as it stands, it is, the form, the voter registration form says it has to be a physical address, but you're allowed to create residency. So it's one of those things that we're tracking as the commission office just because, as you mentioned, there is a lot of discussion about it at these meetings, and it does, it would impact our citizens either way it goes. So I'm, I don't believe it would directly affect our power. It would just be kind of clearing up, there is a lot of questions around the voters who use a mailbox for registration. In my opinion, it just kind of clears that up, whether that is allowed or is not allowed. So, but again, that's just kind of more of my, my take on it and my opinion, but.
Thank you, Meredith.
All right. I believe we're done with our legislative update. Always an interesting time. We now are at the opportunity for public comment. Does anybody from the public like to address the commission? You have five minutes. All right. Commission Liaison Reports.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
You know, I just got recently elected and assigned a number of liaison assignments. And over the course of the preceding months, I very much look forward to attending those meetings and meeting with those individuals and departments that I've been assigned to. Just wanted to, for the sake of the record, note my liaison assignments. If there's any citizens out there that would like to contact me in regard to any number of them, you can also find them on the website. So in brief, my liaison assignments for 2025, Department of Equalization, Museum, Public Defender's Office, Register of Deeds, Treasurer, Museum Board of Trustees, the PDO Advisory Board, the SDACC Executive Board, the Urbanized Development Committee, Abandoned Cemeteries, Interlakes Community Action Partnership, and the Conservation District. So I very much look forward to working with all the individuals in those departments and boards. Recently attended a museum board, and I really enjoyed my time and look forward to learning as much as I possibly can over the course of my term on this commission. So, thank you.
It is a busy time. Any other liaison reports? I have a couple. Last Monday, Susan and I met with the mayor and his staff, and we're talking. and we're talking about ongoing funding and viability for the link for well into the future, not just the next 12 months, we're looking at 20, 30, and beyond. So we're really looking at, you know, the use of opioid monies and that type of thing. So we're having a long-term discussion about funding for the link and management for the link. So those, which is all good. I mean, link isn't in any dire straits by any means, but we're keeping our eye on the ball and making sure that things happen properly. I also am looking at my schedule Wednesday morning from 7:30 to 8:30. We had the Sum Metro Growth Alliance Executive Board Meeting. Just going over some of the initiatives that are happening within our area, our operating area. I've been asked to serve as the Membership Advisory Board Chair for the next year. So there will be election next month, and, I'm sorry, in March is the annual meeting of the Sum Metro Growth Alliance. You will all be invited to that. Starts, I think, at 3:30 on a Wednesday. I'd have to look at the date. More information forthcoming. Then that same day at 11:30 to 1 o'clock, we had the membership meeting in Brandon at the Pizza Ranch, always a good time, attended by at least 20 people, including members of the Governor's Office of Economic Development, Senator Rounds's office. We get usually that DC sends at least, our representatives send at least one or two people. So always well-attended. Just kind of looking at the next year, officers and the direction of the board, which way we're going to have for meetings. And then I believe I had one other meeting. We had a Zoom meeting with the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners on Friday for about an hour. Myself and Meredith attended that, just kind of where maybe Meredith got some of her information for today's meeting. So, yeah, all sorts of good information, just a busy time and what's going on. Any other updates? Commissioner Blumberg.
Thank you. As Commissioner Heisey said, we're starting with new liaison assignments. One of my new assignments from the agenda today was the Accessible Housing Advisory Board, which I'm very thankful to be able to work on this year. At our first meeting of the year that I was able to attend, we were given an update by Brett Johnson and Carrie Benz from County Human Services on the Just Home Project, which has just been an excellent opportunity for the county to show our ability to work within the community to serve specific populations that are in need. And so I just had a few stats that I took notes during that that I thought I would share. Since August of 2024, there were 81 referrals to the Just Home Project, mostly from probation. And just because of the timing of things, I think about 40 of those were withdrawn, but 17 were successfully housed, five of which were families, which is an increasing population that they're, they're working with. It's challenging. Eight individuals were housed at Copper Arms, which is through the St. Francis House program. It's just an excellent opportunity if you have the chance to go learn more about that. And five housing vouchers were issued. So Jean from Human Services and Brett especially, I think, have done most of the heavy lifting on this, but it's been an excellent project that has got a lot of national recognition for Minnehaha County. And then along those lines, I just wanted to mention that Commissioner Karski is going to be on the Regional Homelessness Forum Panel Thursday evening. So looking forward to that.
Yep, Thursday at 5:30 at the Orpheum Theater, the mayor, myself. I guess Rick Alta from the Governor's Office, he's a cabinet level for Human Services, basically. So we're having a forum starting at 5:30, should be done by 6:30. But basically, you know, all the different moving parts when it comes to the issue of homelessness. I'm not going to call it a problem. I don't believe it's a problem. It's a, it's an issue we need to always be aware of and addressing. So that'll be on the agenda at 5:30. It's open to the public and, of course, all the commissioners, if you can attend. Yeah, I asked the mayor if he would consider a different commissioner, but he thought it'd be best if I was there. And I tried to get Commissioner Blumberg, and she said, well, I can be in the wings if you can't make it. So I just, yeah, interesting situation. But anyway, so that'll be on Thursday afternoon at 4:30. Non-action commission discussion.
I just have one comment because I'm the liaison with the sheriff's office. I got a call this weekend, and I just have a tremendous amount of appreciation for the Emergency Medical System Group and especially the sheriff's office when they have to go out for long periods of time and investigate some unusual activity or deaths. And 15 degrees below zero and 30 mile an hour winds in the middle of rural counties is not on anybody's list as being a wonderful thing to do. So I just want to say thank you to those individuals because that weather continuing today is ridiculous to be in, so I'd like to acknowledge that.
All right. Yes, our sincere appreciation to all our first responders and the work that they do. All right, we will have an executive session, so I'm going to look for a motion to enter executive session. We're going for the, we won't be going into the training room next door. We'll be staying in here, so it's for the purposes of South Dakota Codified Law 125, 2134 and 6.
Mr. Chair, I would like to give a comment, a non-commission action comment if there's.
Okay, go ahead.
For that. A little bit of a change of topic here. I did want to address the topic that I believe is of significance, and it's an issue that, in my view, and that of many constituents, it's not exactly receiving the rightful attention it deserves. The deadline to file an application for party status as an intervenor in the Summit Docket currently before the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission is quickly approaching. January 24th is the deadline, to be exact. Minnehaha County is cited at least twice by top-level Summit employees in the Docket, filed November 19th, 2024, as having ordinances they consider unreasonably restrictive. From my reading of these documents, our ordinances are likely to be challenged or preempted during the proceedings between Summit Carbon and the South Dakota PUC. Starting with, for example, Mr. Eric Chovanek is Vice President of Pipeline and Facilities for Summit Carbon Solutions. He is asked on page 16, line 484, "Will the project be designed, constructed, and operated in compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local regulations?" He then goes on to say and answer, "There are six county ordinances that Summit Carbon Solutions request the commission to exercise its authority under SDCL 49-41B 28 to preempt and supersede as unreasonably restrictive." Then goes on to say, "The six ordinances include ordinances in Brown, Edmonds, McPherson, Minnehaha, Sandburn, and Spink County. Other than those specific county ordinances, the project will be constructed and operated in compliance with all local regulations." And it says as much in the testimony by Mr. Alexander Lang, Director of Engineering for Summit Carbon Solutions. So essentially, it's a little bit troubling to me that we're not discussing this matter publicly or taking a public vote on such an important issue as this, especially considering nearly every other county government along the pipeline route has applied or is voting on it today, as is, as is the case with Lincoln County. Brookings County, Brown, Edmonds, Lake, McPherson, Sandburn, and Spink have applied for party status. Among other municipalities on the east side of the state, our very own city of Hartford has applied for party status. As proposed, pipeline is slated to run approximately a mile west of the city. The reasons stated for their applications are very straightforward, and I would say reasonable, showing no partiality as to their favorability or rejection towards the project. I did want to take a moment to cite some of the reasons, just for clarification. Take, for instance, Brookings County Commission. They write, "It is important to receive information as soon as possible so we can stay up to date on the process and procedures." On the other hand, Lake County is even simpler. The proposed project is slated to run through Lake County, South Dakota. And other counties write similarly. But regardless of whether Summit decides to challenge the county ordinances, I don't believe the people elected us to, and I've expressed this with some of the commissioners, to sit on the sidelines and passively wait to see what happens and whether they challenge us. With a project of this magnitude being presently adjudicated, I believe we have responsibility to our citizens and the property owners affected by the pipeline to remain active and engaged participants, said as much by a number of other counties. I believe, as John Locke does when he basically says in his second treatise on government, "The preservation of property is the fundamental purpose of government. This end is one of our highest duties as public servants." As we know, South Dakota voters decidedly rejected Senate Bill 201 by voting no on Refer to Law 21 just last year. This is a comment, this is a concern, excuse me, top of mind for our constituents, and I believe they are looking for us to be leaders and representatives of their interests. So just wanted to state that for the record and express my concerns, but thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll engage on that one. So John Locke would appreciate a separation of powers and levels of government, and I've tried to make it clear for the role of a county commission is to pass, potentially pass planning and zoning ordinances, which we did. When that was challenged in the past, we went out to peer and we defended it, and we actually won. And you'll notice now there is no Navigator Pipeline application. So I guess, I don't know if I can take credit or blame for that, but we did fashion a reasonable ordinance that was defensible, and I think that that testimony was powerful to the PUC. Now, where we would not have powerful testimony is if we get out of our lane. We don't know what the role of a county is. We think we're the PUC. We think we're the state legislature. So one of the keys to our civic structure is to know your role. We are a county commission, so I appreciate you, my colleague Commissioner Heisey, bringing it up for discussion, and obviously, we can discuss it. But I think this would actually be a waste of our resources to hire an attorney. And I think it's kind of ludicrous for a whole bunch of people to go for party status when they're really not a party. They don't have a, they don't have real standing. There's, there's no injury in fact. So I just think we could hire an attorney to go out there and watch the proceedings and then wait and then raise their hand once, if and when they do challenge our ordinance and want to supersede that. Or we could just wait until that actually happens and then pay an attorney and successfully go out there and defend it again. So I just, I just think some of this is, are we an institution where we pour ourselves into it and we understand what a county commission is and we mold ourselves to say, what is our role here? Or is the county commission a platform to perform upon and say, the people have spoken in some election that had a very complex compromise at the state legislature level, and that was their role to play? And are we going to perform upon it and say, hey, look at me, I care about the pipeline? Well, we can talk all we want, but there have been some of us that have been through the battles and have actually legislated on the topic. So that's really all I have to say at this point, but that's, I think you get the sense of the argument and counterargument on why we would need party status or whether it was even ripe to have it on the agenda. So that's all I've got. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Just for clarification purposes, so that the public understands that party status would require that the commission take a position either opposed to or in favor of the pipeline. And I think we individually probably all agree that when we voted on our ordinance and how pipelines can be placed within the county based on development and proper land uses that we'd let our ordinance and our actions as a commission speak for themselves without having to take a vote of the commission and probably a very divided vote, just like the county is divided on the issue as far, I mean, there's landowners that are in favor of the pipeline. They're going to benefit greatly, and there's people that don't want the pipeline. So I don't think, as Commissioner Kipley has said, that this is what is expected of a county commission. Our role is much more defined, and we have guardrails up, basically. We, we need to know what, what our work is and isn't. So I'm definitely not in favor or was not in favor of going beyond the action we have taken with our planning ordinances that we adopted. So I feel the same way, I guess. My personal opinion on a pipeline notwithstanding, I think as a commission, we're, we are pursuing the proper path. Commissioner Blumberg?
Thank you. I also just wanted to give appreciation to Commissioner Heisey for the amount of research that you put in and the, the time that you spent. That's impressive, and I think in a good way to get started on the commission, to show your ability and your commitment to researching the issues. There definitely are citizens who are very concerned and who are watching what we're doing. And I would agree with some of the sentiments stated already, I think, for sake of consistency. We did a, a lot of work two years ago on our ordinance, and when it was challenged, we showed up and defended. And Commissioner Kipley, I think, did a great job, as well as our outside counsel. And I, I know that we have, or I should speak for myself. I think that should our ordinance be challenged, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be consistent with the course that we took two years ago. So thank you for the effort and the time that you put in and for the representation to the, to the concerned citizens.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yep, I think both sides really do have a legitimate argument to make. And, you know, looking at this, I felt it was worthwhile, given what's happening at the PUC, the legislature, just to make sure that we are having this conversation publicly. And just wanted to make sure that some of these, these facts were known to the public. And I know we have some differences of opinion on the commission, but I'm glad we're able to have this conversation in good faith, so thank you.
All right, I'm going to shut down non-action commission discussion and look for a motion to go into executive sessions. Purposes of South Dakota Codified Law 125, 2134 and 6. In here.
Second.
Motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Need a little bit of time to shut down the technology, clear the room, shut the blinds, et cetera. So, thank you, everybody.